At seven o'clock, will you please join us all in the salute to our nation's flag, please? For your information, the board had an executive session with our solicitor.
Tom.
Can I interrupt one minute so I can make an announcement before we get started in the meeting? Let's take a moment of silence to recognize Elizabeth Cotten, a former supervisor and lifelong resident who passed away on December 22nd and has worked hard to make this community a better place. Just a moment of silence, please.
Thank you very much. Just for your information, we had an executive session with our solicitor. We discussed some employment questions, two litigation matters that were underway, and our fire chief helped us deal with some matters with our solicitor. So for our roll call vote, Carol, the supervisors.
Supervisor Ezio.
Who's it on?
Here.
Supervisor Warren.
Here.
Supervisor Fisher.
Yeah.
Supervisor Shafoni.
Here.
Supervisor Cassiolo.
Here.
In addition, township manager Donald Januso, our assistant township manager and director of planning, Jack King, our director of public works, Dan Miller of South Ribbage is here, and Ted Wolford, our fire chief, is here, and Dan Dazra, our township engineer, is in attendance at our solicitor. Before we go to citizens' comments, I know some McDonald Fire Department personnel here had wanted to just say something to the residents and to the board. So who's there from McDonald? Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for a couple moments here. My name is Philip Boggs. I'm the new fire department. I'm here with one of my assistant chiefs, Brad White. I know over the years Cecil Township has supported us, covered a good bit of Latin Heights, assisting with Cecil Township Station 10. So on behalf of all the officers and members of McDonald Fire Department, I just wanted to come out and say thank you for your years of support and look forward to further years of assisting with your township, protecting the residents.
Well, thank you. Everybody knows what a good job you do for us. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you as somebody who lives on that side of the township. You guys are always the first ones to respond to my neighborhoods. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. We have a great working relationship with all three of the township departments. It's an honor with all of us, so thank you.
And you guys are speedy.
Thank you.
Any citizens who want to make a comment or have a question on an agenda item, please feel free to come up now to the microphone. Please state your name and ask for the record.
Candy Wathier, Elm Drive. My first question is the advertising for the director of public works. Do we have a budgeted or anticipated salary for that position?
What?
Right now it's a price of $65,000, but that'll be DOQ.
Okay.
It's a deputy director as well. It's not for the director's position, it's a deputy director.
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to distinguish between the two.
Okay. The other question I had was on the number, the process of gathering information to 501(c)(3). You asked about this at the end of December, that you wanted information gathered. Are we gathering different information than you already have?
Actually, the board had talked to us, solicitor, about getting information. It's going to take some work. We're going to have to go out to outside sources to try to come up with a vehicle or an entity for 501 if we decide to form it. Our solicitor wanted us to authorize her to start to work to gather information to create it. This isn't creating it tonight, it's just authorizing her to start to receive the information. They say fill the box of an entity.
So you're saying she's going to do it or she had to get something? She was going on.
Well, she's not an expert in fire services. None of us are. We know people who are, and they're going to be submitting against us, like South Strabane. We know they have a good charter. We're going to get information to her, and she's going to create one for the township.
So, and I could be wrong, but the way I understand this, this is Cecil Township Fire Department. So does that mean you're going to merge all three fire departments currently in existence? Or you're making a fourth party?
Candy, Shaq, her microphone keeps going in and out. I just want to make sure people can, the video recording thing.
We're not merging anything right now, and it's going to be a cooperation between the departments. This is the form of the entity, so when we have volunteers and paid workers, they can work together. And it's the only kind of mechanism that we can use to have paid guys and volunteers work together. They can't, the volunteers can't work for the township. They can't come on our road department and start driving our trucks as volunteers. If we have a 501(c)(3), they can be a part of the fire service with our paid guys. We have some paid guys now. You're going to see the fire chiefs can ask for a few more. We need a vehicle for the pay, the volunteers to work with our paid guys. So we're just working on that. That's the beginning of the process.
Why would you need a different vehicle? They're already 501(c)(3).
But they're all three independent.
Okay, so we're trying to merge them all together in one.
Eventually, we hope that would happen.
So, I have questions about this pumper. Are you going to, can I come back after we talk about it?
What's the question?
I have several. So the pumper is, who's going to be, it says it's going to be put into a duty location determined by the township.
The township, the township fire chief.
Yes, so we're buying a fire truck, but we don't know where it's going.
He might know.
This fire truck is going to be designated to the Muse Fire Station because they're in need of it.
Is this fire truck going to be owned by Muse then?
It's going to be owned by the township.
So, you're going to buy a fire truck, it's going to be housed at Muse, it's going to be property of Cecil Township. What is, what is the fire, where are you going to put it in Muse? Are they going to replace their existing thing?
Yes, that's the plan. It's to replace.
So you're going to replace an existing truck that they currently own with a township-owned vehicle? Then when the township decides that they don't want that vehicle in use, they pull that truck out. Who replaces the vehicle that's now in use that they own?
The township's ultimately responsible for the fire protection here, so they're not going to do that.
What's the question? We have a fire chief that he's here to do what's best for the township for the whole township.
I'm not questioning, okay, I understand he's here to do what's best for the township. I don't know anything about this. What I'm seeing is you want to form a 501(c)(3). It's under Cecil Township. He's saying that the township is going to own it.
Yes.
There's nothing preventing you from parking this truck in a current fire station, and you deciding later on, and we all know the people that have attended these meetings for years, know that a new fire station is wanting to be built for years up near Clinger, that you have the ability to build a new fire station, and you can at any time, because you own that property, pull that out of there. And it's no longer their property. It wouldn't matter if it was 10s, 20s, or anybody.
Every piece of equipment we buy now, we're paying for. The township is going to be owning all the equipment from here on in. We pay for packs, we pay for packs, everything that they need. Anybody else have a general, I mean, a specific question?
I, for only for us, 721 Elm Drive, it has to do with the fire department also, but they need highly commended because last Monday, my granddaughter's life was saved, and it was saved from our fire department, our volunteers and our EMTs. She would not be alive still hanging today if it wasn't for everybody pulled together to save her. Because life was supposed to land, and they never landed, they aborted life, and they ended up taking her instead of themselves. They saved her. Our volunteers need to stay put. If you want to have paid ones, that's fine, but the volunteers know, different people in the neighborhood, they know where we live. You have, you pay people, then you give them GPS. It says you have arrived, and their houses have been mapped out on the road. So people who live in the township know everybody. We need to keep most of them volunteers.
That's the plan.
And it's a commitment to all of you, because you really need it. It would have been a big honor, because we did CPR ourselves, and yet you came and took over. So you guys really need a pat on the back, and you really appreciate it.
Very sorry for your troubles, but we're glad that they were able to assist you. Anybody else? All right. We have just a couple announcements. No, I guess. We have a historic society meeting scheduled for February 21st. There's a bingo schedule. You can read it on the agenda. I'm not going to read all that. We've got a long agenda. Pavilion rentals are scheduled starting the first Friday in March, so township residents have first crack at it, and then it opens up to non-residents. You can see the time here. Right now, we're going to give some time for our professional and staff reports. So Dawn, you want to start?
Mr. Chairman, since we have a long agenda and brevity, I have my report for this evening.
All right. Please, couldn't be here. Jack.
Mr. Chairman, I want to talk a little bit about building and zoning. First, I want to give credit where credit is due. I think everybody, supervisors did receive the Cecil Township planning and zoning and report. That was completed, as always, by our zoning director, Elizabeth Ross. She did a fantastic job, as always. Want to call your attention to a couple items. We pulled up your seat. We've been pretty busy in 2023. Want to call your attention to residential miscellaneous, that'd be deck, fence, roof. There was 136 permits issued for either a deck, or fence, or roof. 101 single-family detached homes, so 101 permits for 2023 there, and let's see, attached to be, they're a single-family attached, they have 36. Those are the top three permits issued in 2023. It was a busy year, and I expect 2024 to be busy.
Thank you. Excuse me. Bill's on here, I see. Go into, Dan, your engineers report, anything other than your regular agenda?
But then the items that are typically on the agenda, I just wanted to update the board that the Silver Creek development is back into the planning commission with a revised PRD. That revised plan is necessary for them to put some one-story homes that they want to put on the lots, particularly Paul Scormasey's, going to take some of the lots. So you'll be seeing that plan come to you next month. And other than that, I am just on the discussion session tonight. I do have a meeting with the property owner on the Coomer Road realignment this week, so I hope to be able to report back that we can get moving with that project next month. That's it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fairly busy month because we had some labor issues that we were dealing with. Obviously, that's a confidential matter. We also have two cases in active litigation, as I mentioned last month. We dealt with some road dedications, and we're working on a vacation of a road that was previously authorized. We finally got the documents related to that. That's Karen Drive. Work on a couple agreements after last month's meeting, and that's pretty much it for the month. Thanks.
Teddy, can you report?
Yeah, we've been working with the chiefs on setting up a training schedule for the beginning of this year. We're going to be running vehicle rescue. We're also going to have live fire scenario training, and we're setting up a water rescue class. I just want to congratulate a couple of our members. Ben Kickoff for getting his firefighter one. Teresa Savatella and Mike Kesmorsky became fire inspector one, and Corey Wonderley got his fire officer two. These are all pro board certifications, so the volunteers are out there training and becoming certified and meeting the national standards that were requiring of them. Also, I just want to make sure the supervisors are good for me to look into start hiring with that $225,000 budget.
You wouldn't work with Dan or Dawn to get some advertising going?
Okay.
When you have the names, then you'll give us the names to put on the agenda for the actual approval of the hire.
Okay, so I can run a test and do all of them? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our report was submitted. Just to highlight, we had 1,470 responses in Cecil Township in 2023. We're quite busy. And just to note, our membership drive is coming out in the next couple of weeks, so we appreciate the support of township and residents. Currently, we have less than 10% of the residents who do take a membership and support for the service. And we also want to thank the board for consideration in Resolution Number 76.
Thank you. By the way, when Dan mentioned that about membership, a lot of people tell me they don't join because they have insurance that it covers ambulance service. They tell me if you don't have a viable ambulance service nearby, all the best insurance in the world isn't going to help you if you don't have this service that's close by and viable. So we would encourage you to join and be a member, and there's a lot of benefits to you, except for any insurance you may have for work or any health insurance benefits. We're going to get on to the discussion items, Dan, on the public works facility. So the board. The board received a copy of my report related to the public works building this month. There's a lot of working on, going on out there right now. Specifically, we went out to the property owners there a third time to try to get the tree clearance agreement so we can get West Penn Power working up there. I'm going to give you an update from Dawn on that this week. Yule is completely building construction. To date, the building shell is 100% complete. The exterior doors and windows have been installed, and paving has been completed. The office is 95% complete. The floor ceiling is currently underway, with only significant tasks to complete now is the installation of restroom partitions, carpets in the office, and code bases. General contractor's moving right along. The electrical work is also ongoing. It's approximately 40% complete. Plumbing is approximately 90% complete. The fire protection system is 90% complete, and the HVAC system is approximately 55% complete. Outside, they're working on the fuel tanks, and that work is well underway, about 60% complete. So there's a number of different pay items on the agenda tonight related to that. Again, the only issue that we have ongoing at the building right now is just the delivery of the electrical panels and switch here, which has been delayed. So we're trying to work with West Penn Power to see what we can do, because we're going to have this building done, and we might be waiting on a piece of electrical equipment. So just to make everybody aware of that. So that's the only issue at this point in time. That's my report on the meeting presenting questions. Yeah, so Joe's put together the roads for consideration for the township, along with Bill Bottard, and they've come up with a plan for road paving for 2024. It's not unfamiliar with what we've done in the past. We're recommending three different contracts. Contract A is the liquid fuels funded project, and the work would include work on Profio Road, from 392 Profio to the intersection of King Road. That would be typical rotor milling, cutting keyways, and then placing two inches of super paved binder, installing wedge curbs, and an inch and a half of super paved top material. Estimated cost for that work is about $188,000. Dan, let me interrupt you for just one second. We're going to talk to you more about that. We have some questions about development that's going to be going on, or may be going on, or may not be. So on that issue in particular, we want to clarify. Yeah, so the idea would be, we would take, yeah, we would want to be sure whether we do that. I thought about the same thing, whether that development comes back or not. Okay. Yeah, we can do that. That's not a problem. There's no problem. And then the other section of Profio was 226 Profio to 155 Profio. I do have some little maps that would show you where this is. Again, we would be doing, cutting keyways, doing base repairs, and then overlaying half of material. Price is about $58,000. McConnell Road from Muse Bishop, Park Press Drive, this is the work that we got part of the funding last year from the developer. Scope of the work, again, is the rotor milling, keyways, two inches of binder, and an inch and a half of top surface. The price on this is about $273,000. Clinger Road from McConnell Road to 38 Clinger, this scope is four inches of milling, keyways, and then we're going to put two and a half inches of binder, inch and a half of top on this. The price on that is about $201,000. Morgan Road, this is an intersection improvement project for about 475 feet. We would be cutting back the slopes, rotor milling, profiling, existing paving, cutting keyways at the intersecting roads, completing base repairs, some inlet adjustments, replacing some inlets, and then go ahead and do some paving, two inches of binder, and some wedge curbs, and an inch and a half of top. Estimated cost on this one is about $5,000. North Poly Road, another one that we want to finish up, now that the installation of the wall and the widening is complete. This again is for three inches of rotor milling, the binder and the top material, wearing surface, and basically shift that paving over as we make down towards another line. So that's contract A. That's under the liquid fuels. That's the money where we actually get money from the state relative to doing the maintenance on the road. Contract B is for South Point Boulevard. This is one that we've identified in the past that was going, coming up. Big project, again, it's a long road. South Point Boulevard from Technology Drive north towards I-79. So this would be really working on the north section of the road, Technology Drive, up to the interstate. Four inches of rotor milling, profiling the road, crack sealing, application of some crack sealing tape on the wider cracks, and then we're going to do two and a half inches of binder, an inch and a half of top on that road. The cost on that is $554,000. Then finally, Contract C, which is the line-striking contract, there's a number of different roads that you might not read all these, but basically, in summary, we have Contract A at about $853,000, Contract B at $554,000, Contract C at $69,000, for a total of about $1.477 million. So we would ask later on in the agenda to put these out to bid, so we get the prices in early, and just try to do the early work of getting the best prices.
Dan, had a question. Joe, we talked about that South Point Boulevard. After they milled the road off, was we talking about a fiber reinforced seal coat on the milled surface before we paved it? Was that in the description here, the word? I didn't know if I seen it spelled out. Okay, but we are going to respect that idea. Okay, thanks, Joe.
So that's the report. If there are no questions, we'll come up with an alternative for that section of Profio. I will work with Bill. Get bids in as early as next month. The next thing on the overlay district, I know we've gone over it here, we've had it, just go over it one more time, or plans. Yeah, so there's a couple of different zono matters that were, had started on and wanted some attention given. And the first and the biggest one is that the planning commission made the recommendation for the MUC MUR district, and that was after a couple revisions to that, and some input from other people that came to meetings. So they put it in a final condition and the board can review it. It would be my recommendation that you bring that back to another public hearing for one last time to look at it before you would adopt that ordinance. Then at the same time, there was a request to look at the IHPD overlay district in terms of where residential is allowed within that district. The planning commission, again, provided a recommendation related to that, and it needs a public hearing also. So it would make sense to do those both at the same time. And then finally, there was just one other cleanup issue. We just did a number of different cleanups in the ordinance. There's one that it's always can be problematic, and that's the one related to zoning hearings related to requests for rezone. Right now, our ordinance requires us to have a public hearing if somebody makes an application for a zoning amendment. It's my understanding that we don't have to do that. I think that we need to just amend our ordinance to say "may" instead of "shall," which would give the board an option, or whatever, whatever line we solicitor did is necessary to comply with the EMTs. So again, that, this would be a text change that would require a public hearing. So if you did decide to set up a public hearing, you can accomplish all three of those things being on that thing. I think a lot of people are anxious for us to get that ordinance, at least, yes. Would anybody have an issue? We have a meeting, a hearing on Wednesday, the March 6th. It's a month from now. I mean, I think we're ready for it for the public, and I think they're anxious to get the mixed use zoning out of the way. People want to do things with the property. Maybe make it on the 6th, 7 o'clock? What, Dan, how much, I don't know what kind of input we'll have on that. Well, I mean, the MUC MUR has gotten a lot of interest, but I, you know, you're just considering the adoption of the ordinance, you're not representing the property. Yeah, that, yeah. Well, maybe you can start like Dawn said, maybe you can have it on the 6 o'clock before the, yeah. I think the actual zoning part, when we get to that, that's going to take a lot longer.
I am waiting on a month.
I am waiting on a month. Like, why not do it? Like, on a Monday night?
We, we, we okay with it 6 o'clock on Monday before a public meeting?
Look.
I'm fine with it. Why wait a month?
All right, okay, I understand. Can you be here?
Yeah.
All right, okay, we'll sit here for 6 o'clock on before March meeting to just go over the zoning issues that are here.
Just, Dan, you not agree that it'll take more than an hour? It has in the past. I'm not trying to beat a divorce there, but it's...
It all depends on how many minutes I want to be public on. I can't really judge that. I'm happy to, you know, whatever the board thinks. I think that the text change items are pretty simple, but the MUC MUR would take a little while.
All right, one hour. All right. Let's go into a resolution. For Resolution 46-2024, it's considered bidding a fire truck model KME Panther Custom Pumper, 750 gallon water capacity, 100 gallon per minute pump capacity, in the name of Cecil Township with a duty location determined by our township fire chief. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 47, 2024, it's considered our solicitor authorizing her to start the process of just gathering information for the formation of a township of 501(c)(3).
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion fails to three. All right, item number 48-2024, consider the appointment of Nicole Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Board to fill a vacant position. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nicole's here, she wants to stand up. It's me, too. Maybe they'll see you at the business. Thank you. For 49-2024, we need to consider that, we had a hearing today at 6 o'clock for a pickleball facility. It's basically a recreational facility in our township in the Village of Lawrence, in the Teodory Park. It sounds like it's something that all of our community will want to participate in eventually. So we had a hearing today, we were able to vote on it tonight. There were a couple of concerns about parking, and the applicant has agreed to meet any concerns we have parking for his site. But is there a motion? All right. It's to consider application 2023-0042 for Level Up Pickleball LLC. It's on 19 Mayview Road in Lawrence, with the one condition that they provide written confirmation of off-site parking availability to Level Up Pickleball from Charles and Georgine Colgeri. They're owners of the property at 19 Mayview Road, and to provide written confirmation of off-site parking available to Level Up Pickleball from Doll and Lea, what is it? Doll Leasing LLC, owners of the property on 11 Mayview Road. It's just a standby parking. It's a new type of facility, and it's hard to judge how much parking a unique facility like that needs. So he has parking maximized on his own site, but in case there's overflow, he has, he'll have a provision for it. So is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
It's been moved. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 50-2024, consider the application number 2024-0002 for the Del Vecchio subdivision plan contingent upon addressing comments from the township engineer. The applicant is Ermano and Ellen Del Vecchio, and it's at 64 Muce, Beach Street and Muce.
So this is the Del Vecchio plan that you have in front of you.
Del Vecchio, basically a lot line, they're actually taking the duplex unit, removing the middle of the duplex, and they're actually moving that over to this location here so the duplex would be all on one, all on one property, and then the other property is also on Del Vecchio here to the I.
So the planning commission reviewed, yes, it recommended it. They've addressed all of our elements, so it's in order for consideration.
So we have a motion approved.
So moved.
It's been moved. And I'll second it, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Good luck with that. Keep us informed. Item number 51-2024, it's considered the application 2024-0005 for the Rank Plan of Lots Number Two, and it's also contingent upon addressing comments from our township engineer.
Yeah, this is the Rank property, which here's Rising Road to the left where my cursor's going up. This is the current property line on the eastern boundary that goes through the line. Essentially, this plan is just to remove that line and actually create and add on to parcel B, which is owned by the property owner. So I believe Mr. Rank is going to sell this property to them. So this is the plan in order to do that. We reviewed the plan, made comments, our comments have been addressed, and plan is in order for consideration.
Dan, just a question, is this an alternative now to his plans for housing lots up there? Or will this make take the next step towards it?
I don't know. Not been in communication with us. I mean, he's looking to do lots along the road, which I believe are right in this location, and would not earn anything else back on this. I think this is just a land sale for him.
All right, it's a simple line change. Is there a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 52-2024, consider our 2023 planning and zoning annual report reviewed and approved by the planning commission on January 18th. That's the report, they're annual report of all the actions they've taken all year from the whole year 2023. I know they're required by MPC to provide that to the township and residents. Is there a motion to approve or accept it?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Number 53-2024, consider application for payment number 11 for the work completed to date on the Cecil Township Public Works Facility for the general construction in the amount of $135,391.73 to your construction company.
So moved.
It's been moved. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
The motion carries. 4-1. For 54-2024, consider application payment number nine for the work completed to date to Cecil Township Public Works Facility, electrical project in the amount of $100,000, $869.15 to SC Schultz Electric. So moved.
So moved.
Been moved. I'll second that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For 55-2024, consider application for payment number seven for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility, the plumbing project in the amount of $18,857.50 to First American Industries. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
The motion carries 4-1. For number 56-2024, it's a consider application for payment number five for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility, a mechanical construction project in the amount of $338,085 to East West Manufacturing and Supply Company, Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion carries 4-1. Application number 57-2024, it's for application for payment number six for the work completed to date to the Cecil Township Public Works Facility, the fire protection project in the amount of $36,000 to Alliance Fire System, Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
It's moved, and I'll second that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion carries 4-1. For 58-2024, it's a consider application for payment number 12 in the final for the work completed to date to the Cecil Township Public Works Facility, the early site contract project in the amount of $105,768.61 to Stewart Contracting, along with that change order number five to rectify quantities installed. Dan, you might just, before we react on it...
Yeah, that's just, that actually was, we didn't use as much quantities installed. That's just an accounting thing to take, take account for the quantities that were not used on the contract. So it's a no charge cost to the township.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. 4-1. For 59-2024, consider the application for payment number one for the work completed to date to the Township Public Works Facility, the fuel station project in the amount of $220,500 to AGSC, Inc. Company. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
The motion carries 4-1. Item number 60-2024, consider the release of the financial security posted for the public and the private improvements for McConnell Trails Phase One Development. Public, the amount was $41,479.40, and that's what's required, like stormwater management or sewers, or the things that developers require to do. The private $73,741.18, that's private work where the township ordinance requires where might be extra paving or landscaping or anything that the MPC doesn't require, for a total reduction of $115,220.60. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For 61-2024, it's authorizing the township engineer to complete the documents necessary to make application to the DEP permit for replacement of the Walnut Street carport. We did ask him, I know he got started, because we authorized it, we need to formally formalize that approval.
Yeah, it's ready, I think it's almost ready for some...
Good, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Consider number 62-2024, authorizing the township engineer to prepare plans and specifications and to bid 2024 pavement maintenance project. Then with the understanding that we want to reconsider some work on Profio and to have find and recommend an alternate for that part of the project.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 63-2024, consider setting the public hearing for the review of the final version of the MUC MUR zoning district and the text change to the IHPD district overlay and the change of zoning here. We already set that for Monday at 6:00 p.m. before our March meeting. For number 64-2024, consider the appointment of Jordan Tax Service, Inc. as the deputy tax collector for real estate, tax for Cecil Township for the years 24 and 25.
Is there a motion? Two years out? Okay, okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Then seconded, I'll second it. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 65-2024, consider the appointment of Warren Anderson to the planning commission to take this seat vacated by Troy Combs. The term will expire on January 2027.
I'll make that motion.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We need to make an appointment as for an alternate for the zoning hearing board. Is there a recommendation?
I make a motion to appoint Ellen Barney as an alternate.
It's been moved, is there a second? I'll second that, those in...
Are there any conflict of interest? Just asking for clarification because he is obviously married to an existing board member, and there's a requirement of separation between our board and the zoning hearing board. That's Darlene's husband.
She has a question.
Yeah, there's just like, on a planning board or municipal authority board, there's not so much, but there's a very serious requirement for a separation between those two boards. And why you want to sit?
I know that I've ever seen, you know, something says a married couple can not separately sit on the different boards.
So seeing as there's a question and you don't have the answer, and he's an alternate, can we table it for one month?
She said that, that she didn't see any, she stopped it.
I just haven't had time to consider. This is the first time I've heard it, but it's up, so.
So I would ask that we table it for one month. He's an alternate.
Is there a second to table the motion to appointment until our solicitor reviews it? Is there a second? All right, is there a motion to, I mean, we have a motion to...
I just want to be on the record that if something would happen, then I was formally opposed to the fact that you're appointing a married couple to boards that have specifically legal requirements for separation. That's my, that's my opposition to that.
All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I've accused myself.
No.
Okay, Carol, motion carries three, one and one extension.
I just think we probably could have found that somewhere.
Consider number 67-2024, consider hiring John Coffin as a part-time custodian for the municipal building at an hourly rate of $20 per hour.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Number 68-2024, consider authorizing the township manager to advertise for the position of Director, Deputy Director of Public Works.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For number 69-2024, consider the purchase and installation at the township municipal building, one new three-foot bike with double-sided LED sign from stacks signs, and it costs This is a CoStar purchase.
I'll make that motion.
That's where the state has already bid for us, and we can just go off their bids. It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 70-2024, consider accepting the bid of $550 for the township's used 2005 Ford Explorer. This vehicle was also advertised through our municipal... Is there a motion to accept that bid?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 71-2024, considering accepting the bid of $1,950 for the township's used 2015 Ford Explorer. This was also advertised through our municipal... Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 72-2024, consider accepting the bid of $975 for the township's used 2010 Dodge Charger as advertised through the municipal... Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 73-2024, considering accepting the bid of $4,300 for the township's used 2013 Ford Taurus, also through municipal... Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number 74-2024, consider for purchase of two post-vehicle lift for installation Consider for purchase of two post-vehicle lift for installation at the new Pub Works Garage from Don Parker Sales at a cost of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. This is also through the Cars Co-Stars bidding process.
So moved.
It's been moved. Seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries four to one. For item number seventy-five dash twenty twenty-four. Consider for the purchase of an air compressor system for installation of the new Pub Works Garage from Total Equipment Company at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Again, this is a Co-Stars bid purchase. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
The motion carries four to one. For item number seventy-six dash twenty twenty-four. Consider allocating additional money to South GMS to bring the total to one hundred thousand dollars budget here. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-four. Consider the reorganization of minutes at the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors from Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-three. Consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Tuesday, January second regularly. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-three. Consider the general funding invoices from January first through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Moved, I'll second those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. At this time, it's the good part, any residents have any general comments or questions? Please come up to the microphone and give us your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Anybody has an iPhone, any app products, if you could turn them down on YouTube, that's one of the reasons. Back. My phone's off now and I usually watch, you know, questions on YouTube if anybody has it. If you could just turn them down or mute them, we'll probably not get any more feedback if you would do that.
Kelly Sturtevant, Thirty-Sixty Solomond Street Drive. I just have a couple of quick things and I missed some meetings. I wanted to say thanks to Public Works for following up on my request to do some better signage coming off of the Southern. So there were big improvements beyond what I expected and even asked for with some new signage and flashing light on the signage to make sure the people coming up south of way knew that there was a stop sign and that they were entering the intersection with Rising Road.
Thank you, guys.
Pardon?
I just thank them also for you.
And still related to Rising Road. Cindy, you had mentioned at the previous meeting back in November that you'd gotten a call from PennDOT and thought, oh, you're related to Rising Road. Did you ever get a chance to talk to them?
It was not related to the repair of Rising Road, unfortunately. So I had just talked to State Rep Jason Ortizai this past week and they still have no formal plans to repair it.
I've seen some patchings just like in the past couple of days, but I wasn't sure who had done it of some of the potholes.
I can ask him again. I mean, there's no, there needs to be significant repairs and there's nothing in the pipeline right now for Rising Road.
Okay. And then the last thing, there, you mentioned a, an ordinance for zoning MUR and MNC and I missed the last planning meetings, but is that something, you said you're going to have a public hearing on it? Is there something that we can see in advance?
Yes, so that's, that will be those zoning ordinance amendments. There'll be an ordinance drafted. It will be advertised and it will be available for inspection. So all of the above.
There's not any zoning changes, it's just text and language items.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any board members have any comments or questions? Oh, okay.
Good evening. Merle Leska, 383 Coleman Road. I'd like to have a little discussion about the gas level. That is on Augustine property. I just wonder, the conditional use permit, is it in perpetuity? Are they allowed to put as many as they want? Will it go on pretty much forever? And the reason I ask is because I'm going through my documentation. And as this thing evolved, they proposed three wells in twenty twelve. And before they ever, they started proposing more and more and more. And before they ever, one hole in the ground, they supposedly had fourteen proposed. So they put four in the ground and they came back for a second round. Before they went with their second round of four more, which is what we're told. I get a notice that there's a fifteen plan in. And when I talk to people around the neighborhood, including some of the supervisors, nobody was ever actually told that there was a fifteen. And so my question is first, can they put as many holes in the ground as they want forever? And then when they run out of room on the well pad, can they just expand the well pad and do what they want? So is the cloak of immunity on these people to do whatever they want and just expand and grow everywhere? Because it's never clear to anybody how many they're going to put. So I'm going to preface that. Now, back in twenty twenty-one, I had sent an email out to some of the people on the board about a study that was done. It was some of the things that were left out of the ordinance that was developed for the gas well, gas well drilling here. You establish the DVA, which is what you can hear for noise, but you never establish the DBC, which is the low frequency and the vibrations that are involved with this. And that's what I've been monitoring up there with a regulated ANSI two certified calibrated sound meter. And this is what is disturbing a lot of people around here. It's not so much the noise you might hear, it's the vibration and the frequencies that you don't necessarily associate with things. But it's disturbing. It's causing nausea in my children, headaches. It's just not right. Okay? And like I said, I published this with several of you on the board. January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, ten forty-eight. I included that in there. I have copies of this if you would like to read them. These are published studies of low-level vibrations can do to people and families. And, you know, I just wanted to make you aware of that because I put it out there and I've got it over the bottom. And I included a pretty detailed list of, this is a formal complaint that I'd like a response from and I got nothing from anybody. And, you know, the idea of perpetuity is just absurd. I was here twenty years before any of this crap started happening. And now that I'm going to have to live with this, as long as I'm here, there's no limit to it. They can just keep adding. They can just do whatever they want. They can, oh, it's a subcontractor that did it, the problems with the road. It's a subcontractor that did this. Deflection, deflection, deflection. This cloak of immunity that just goes on is just unacceptable. Unacceptable.
Can I ask you one question first? I mean, Dan or even Gretchen, do you know that? I know, they're limited on the site that they got approved, so they're not going to expand beyond it. I don't know how many wells they can possibly add on the site once they have a site approved. I don't know if you know that, Dan?
I mean, it all depends on how many laterals or other properties that they have signed up, writing the lease.
The laterals branch away. Eventually, they're going to reach their limit that they, you know.
I would assume.
The value is, back in twenty twelve, they proposed three. And another thing I like.
Merle, hang on one second. I can answer your question. So there's fourteen approved in the existing conditional use. So they can do fourteen without having to come back for any additional approvals.
Right now. It's already on the sign. I got it right here. They sent it to me. Here's fifteen right here.
I can't speak for the board. I have no knowledge of Jack. Do you know how many they sent?
They're permitted fourteen. They're doing five from the well pad to go northwest. That'll be nine. There are.
Fifteen is being drilled right now.
No, it's not. Number five is being drilled right now. There's four more that they're allowed to do before they have to come back in front of the board.
Well, what is my paperwork saying? So they lied to me or they lied to you?
Nobody's lied to anybody.
Wait, which one is it?
Nobody's lied to anybody.
Why are they, fifteen is there and it's being drilled right now?
Because they don't go one, two, three, four, five. It's number fifteen, okay? Nine were though. And number fifteen is of the first nine.
So I, I got a notification, December fifth, that by the way, here's number fifteen. It's what we're doing. And they're saying that that's going to be right next to number five.
Okay, but there's fourteen allowed. They've drilled four, not one, two, three, four. They've drilled four south. Go ahead.
My question is.
Will you please adjust the board? Will you please adjust the board here?
How can they keep adding to this without any percussion? So you don't know which one we're drilling. You don't, you can't tell me for sure.
Merle, we'll find that out. Merle, give us a chance to find that out. You brought it to our attention. It might make sense what Jack is saying, the drilling in different orders, but let us find out. You gave us.
Buddy, I just want to make it known that this is my concern is that they can just keep going and going and going. And then, well, we ran out of room to punch holes in the ground. We're going to expand it. It seems like they have a cloak of immunity they want.
There's a limit. I mean, you heard that, there is a limit. All right. And wait, the issue too about the low frequency noise, that's kind of new to us. We will address that also. And if it's not addressed in our old ordinance, we have talked about it, about having a hearing or meeting to work out new standards for our ordinance. We know it's been how many years since that was written? Sixteen years ago or something? We're going to have a hearing to get new information and, you know, we can amend or update the ordinance if it's required. That might be a component that's other people are doing and we just don't have it in our ordinance yet. But if it's a component in other ones, it will be in ours.
But Tom, so just so you're not giving him a false sense of security, if we update our existing ordinance, their, their well pad will be grandfathered.
I think he knows that. If we update, it's not going to affect the Augustine pad.
He doesn't know that because you're saying, hold on, we're going to update our ordinance and we're going to do all these things, but Augustine wouldn't.
Michelle, yes, she cares about the neighbors, the rest of the neighbors too. She knows it's a kind of a done deal with Augustine, but she cares about all the rest of the neighbors for next wells. So we do got to get on that. I mean, to update. No, you made that clear.
And just to be clear, Tom. Just to be clear, Tom, January twenty-one, you're on the list. You were sent this with the low frequency study and I got no rebuttal from you as well. So you are on record as having received the information that I'm speaking about today, which I have pointed out in pages. So I have sent this in previous times. Apparently you were busy, beat it, didn't consider it, but it's still real information. It's real data. And this is even more important now. And the reason I bring this up is because they came through and said, let me show you what a reclaim well site is.
Like it's got a, it's got some fields and, you know, there's butterflies.
Well, when I see them saying, well, here's fifteen, when I'm understanding that fourteen was already approved, but no fifteen, but I've got paperwork that says, here's fifteen. Oh, and by the way, we're drilling that right now. It doesn't seem like they're ever going to go. There's never going to be reclamation. It's going to be an ongoing thing. I'm never going to see butterflies and unicorns. It's going to be constantly this giant wall up against me and I'm not going to be able to do it. I can't sell my property. People come up and they go, what is that? So I got nothing. You guys voted for me to die on my heel.
Mr. Chairman, they're in compliance.
I think our board understands that we, we, none of us are positioned as, but it that.
We've voted well pads down and the court's overturned.
Karen Fifty-Eight North Polley. I have a question that was brought up by someone who came here before regarding the MUC MUR information. Can somebody send me a copy of that? What the proposed definition of those zones are and what proposed wording changes are so that it can be reviewed and shared with the public prior to the public meeting?
Jack, can you, at a very minimum, post it on the website? Thank you.
Can I also see a copy? Because I'm on the zoning board, but I didn't receive a copy of the twenty twenty-three pending in, on zoning annual report. So can I also receive a copy of that, please?
Yes, that's public information. We'll have it.
Okay, thank you. I have a question regarding, and if there were any other applicants who, for the alternative of the zoning board position.
Don, any other questions?
So I just, I wasn't going to bring this up because I don't want to start drama, but I feel the need to recognize there was an alternate on the zoning hearing board after years of serving as an alternate resigned because we replaced, we took somebody who was on the planning commission after less than one full year and moved him to the zoning board instead of putting the alternate there. So he resigned and he was a very good, qualified zoning hearing board member. And I, you know, while I have nothing against Mr. Barney personally, I feel frustrated currently with this board and their appointments. We have multiple people serving on multiple boards. Mrs. Barney and her husband, just the two of them serve on three boards. I find it hard to believe that we can't find other people in our, you know, community that would be willing to sit on boards. And we have, you know, Barb Hamilton on multiple boards. I don't want to call people's names, but it's frustrating.
Merle was looking for names. You've given us a lot of names.
Did anyone ask Lauren Anderson, who was a sitting member of that board, if he would do the backup work? Because he already knows how to do it. He did it for three years.
He resigned because he wasn't considered for the full position.
No, the alternate. But I'm saying, did anyone ask Lauren Anderson?
We're not going to, it's a board's priority to appoint members. We're not going to have debate about who should have been appointed.
Okay, well, it seems like there's a conflict of interest and no one wants to answer the question.
Maybe one board member has a dispute about it, but the board has to make a decision.
I understand, but you're willingly tabling, doing research into the legal implications of this in favor of just pushing it through. And I think that's severely irresponsible.
To answer your question, I asked this board to consider Mr. Anderson for the zoning position and they declined.
Okay. My last item I want to add to what Merle's statements were, I do want to go on the record Okay. My last item I want to add to what Merle's statements were, I do want to go on the record to say that the low decibel noises, everyone in my family uncharacteristically has had severe headaches over the course of the last couple of months and has also experienced trouble sleeping. I also have a question about if they drill all 14 wells and they have to come back to reapply for additional wells, will they have to apply, will they have to adhere to any modified ordinances related to oil and gas noise?
If we amended, yes, they would be.
Okay, so can we please stop talking about modifying the noise ordinance and stop talking about modifying the oil and gas ordinance and do it before they come back and ask again? And then we're in trouble again. We can do nothing because we're going to be back in the same position. The same people are going to be coming up here complaining and ranting and raving. And you're going to throw your hands up and say, there's nothing I can do because the ordinances aren't up to date. I've been coming to these meetings for five years. You've been talking for five years about the fact that we have woefully outdated oil and gas and noise ordinances. So please help protect us from this continuing to happen in the future. The ship has already sailed. You can't save everybody from the flood, but you can prevent it from happening after 14 times, which means that we're at least already again likely going to have to go through this. This is now six to nine months per instance and we're on our second time. There could be a third time and a fourth time and I don't want there to be a time in six, time in seven because it's not fair.
All right. I don't think it'd be this reason you're on here. Can we gather-
I can guarantee there are people that will not agree to amend or change the oil and gas ordinance.
I'm glad we agreed to have a hearing. Dan, between now and April 3rd, say, in a couple of months, Gretchen, we pull some information together for the board so we can start looking at amendments that other municipalities have or updates on drilling that we don't have our ordinance. And that gives us two months. We have actually set a special hearing on April 3rd for drilling to update our oil and gas ordinance. Will everybody, can everybody make it for Wednesday, I want to say the 3rd?
Two microphones next to each other. I don't think it's anything to do with the app.
Carla, you may make it the 3rd. It's a Wednesday. Yeah. Frank, Bill, Cindy.
Is it going to be a workshop to discuss options or do you want to have actually something advertised for?
Gretchen, your microphone's not on.
I don't think we need-
The question is going to be a workshop to discuss, like take a couple of examples and to discuss it or to have something prepared.
We need to have the hearing in the meantime. I don't know that citizens have so much input on how to amend the ordinance. Our professionals need to. I mean, if you have somebody in your firm that knows what's new in the industry that we can upgrade our ordinance so it's better for the residents, your attorneys might know that. Or Dan, someone in your firm may know that. We need that kind of information first. We're not going to get that from the residents. We need the technical stuff that's new since our ordinance was passed that would help our ordinance and strengthen it.
And that's fine. My question is, is it going to be a hearing on a specific ordinance or a discussion?
Let's have a hearing because then if we have enough information, let's do it right away. If it's one or two points we changed, then it answers her question. Then someone may come and make another application in May.
So you're asking Gretchen to have a written ordinance that we're going to discuss?
No, just information for it. We're not going to act on it that night.
Okay, yeah, yeah. That I was asking. We're going to advertise an ordinance that you're then going to have a hearing on on April 3rd.
Yes, that's what I asked you.
But that's not what you just said. You said-
I said, can you have it ready? Do you have some information?
I can certainly have information. The question is, are we going to have an actual ordinance that you're going to vote on?
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Can you do that? Again, it doesn't have to be all inclusive. There's some probably big things out there that are new in the industry that we don't know about or we don't have in our ordinance. We don't have to get them all. I'd like to get the important ones that have to be out there. So I'm just asking, can you help us to get one ready to go?
Tom, listen to me for a second.
Oh, listen, can you help us get it?
Yes, there's two different ways to do it. I can give you a couple of examples and then you guys can have a workshop and decide.
No workshop. Can you help us with an ordinance?
Yeah.
All right, let's have an ordinance hearing.
So you want me to present you with an ordinance, I'll present it to the board and then you guys will advertise it for April 3rd to have a hearing on that ordinance.
Yes, and then we will get it in from the residents and we might have to go and have another hearing.
So Don is advertising it as a hearing.
Got to get started sometime. I'm tired of putting that off too. Dan, can you help?
Got it.
All right, so we'll have an actual hearing on April 3rd. And then if you have any information on sentence from other ordinances, we'll factor it in. Yeah, we're going to do 6:00 PM. It could be a long one.
Clear, so we're not going to have any kind of meeting to discuss what should go?
No, you can add things and discuss things and we'll probably have to have another hearing. We've got to have that first one.
Okay, so I guess hearing, meeting are just interchangeable.
No, hearing is not a workshop.
A workshop is something that we wouldn't vote on. We would just take public input, we would consider it, then we would take what's given to us from the public and we would write the ordinance that we would then have a hearing on. What he's talking about is us having a hearing, which is something we can, a written ordinance that we can actually then vote on.
Not at the hearing. We don't vote at hearings though.
So you would come to the hearing with something already written?
Yes. All the new things that we know and that we find out that are out there. If you have things, if you know things, if you know, somebody can help us with it, give it us.
Tom, and you think we can get that done in two months?
Don't you think that's the most of the questions?
And then it's behind the scenes. Like why not have a live show?
Be like that so far behind the scenes? It's not very transparent to do that without, because you're not doing it open to the public.
That's what the hearing's for.
The hearing is to show the public what you've already done and to ask them how they feel about it.
Yeah, and to actuate.
I mean, that's just not how transparency works.
When you ask us to bounce, what would you like to see? You're the one, you ask me most of the time.
Transparency works.
You asked me, you wanted to have a hearing to upgrade our ordinance. You said it's so far behind. We're trying to do that.
I don't think the government works by, you know, making a law, writing a law for the whole township and us being like, no, Gretchen, that's not how it works. It should work like this, like-
That's what the hearing is for, input.
And saying how they feel about it.
All right, we're going to have a hearing on April 6th. You can come here and give us information.
When is April 6th? Is that the month?
April 3rd, not April 6th.
It provides, April 3rd, 6:00 PM.
Wait, 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
April 3rd.
No.
No, it's the Wednesday after.
We'll never get it done in a hearing.
Okay. What was, what were we talking about before about changing the language of voting on the ordinance is? Is that the same discussion that we're having now? Because you were talking about the language that was going into changing it that we didn't have to have a hearing, we shall have a hearing, or we-
An amendment we have to have a hearing.
That would be the zoning text change. That was the third thing that Dan raised. In addition to the M U R portion, there would be a text change proposed to rezoning applications. And whether this board has to have a hearing in May, which I have raised this with this board before. I presented you with language textual changes. It's never gone past that. I don't know if you're going to include it this time, but we can include that change. So right now, it states that they have to have a hearing. The language in your ordinances shall, the case law says it's not required. So a rezoning is a legislative action. It's not quasi judicial. They don't have to provide a due process hearing. Their ordinance, your ordinance currently says uses the word shall. So there's a bit of a disconnect between the law and your ordinance. Okay, but in the, again, in the sense of transparency, it would make sense to still hold a hearing instead of the board just- I am. Individual properties. Okay. Okay. Okay, okay. Right, right.
And there'll be a separate hearing to actually change the zoning.
Okay, and thirdly, I just want to say that I'm highly disappointed also in the way that this board is pushing through items without discussing them. I, with opening up the new year, letting all the directors speak, you know, I enjoy that. I enjoy hearing what the department heads talk and hear what's going on in the township. And I think that that's good to hear from the department heads and hear what's going on. I think that's open to transparency, but I feel there's many times where, Mr. Chairman, you ignored people on your own board tonight and you, what they were saying to you, and you just pushed things through without hearing from several other members of your board. And it's a shame because I think you're going backwards in the wrong direction. Instead of making things more transparent as you should, you're making things less transparent with this township.
Name one of the things that the board majority didn't agree on. We're not all going to agree. Not all of them will be fine.
I know.
I'll give you five, so if three or four tell me they're good with it, that's what we do.
But just criticizing you, sir, I'm criticizing the entire board.
Could you name some things that the board didn't do that the majority, that I didn't have?
The things that you guys pushed through as a majority that lacked transparency. I mean, do you want me to rehash everything that we've already talked about?
Anybody else have any general comments?
Sorry, come back. There was one thing I had. Sorry, I told it to the right. But I'm concerned about my life. I just also wanted to make clear that there is an investigation into my water supply due to this drilling activity. I just, I don't know if you guys, I don't know if you, the board is made aware of this, but there is an actual D E P investigation into my water supply because the significant differences in the latest round of testing, which were, I had two tests that were before any drilling. And I basically had another test, pre-drilling of the four wells.
Could you please direct to the board?
There's five on the sign. There's five on the sign. Five on the sign. And by the way, why are they there before they're completed? However, so this was actually a pre-drill, post-drill sample. And there were significant differences in my water between the first two and the third one. Significant. When they tested in the same spot, I had things that were 10 times worse, 15 times worse.
Is the D E P working with you on that? Because that's their purpose, not ours, but I'm glad they are. I'm glad you have to stay on them if you have to.
Clear to the board that this activity is not benign. This activity is not just what you wanted or what you hoped for. Actually damaging people, hurting people, inconveniencing people. And who knows what's going to happen in the future. This is no longer a temporary inconvenience. People, I've been hearing something from that mountain that was created up there since July 3rd, damn near every day. And it looks like I'm going to hear it until the day I die. Because they can just keep putting more and more and then I can only hope that I'll get some rest out of this investigation. Because I had to go this far.
You will have a response from my range on that. You question, you have about the 15th wells. We will get it.
Tell you, Tom. And I said, boy, there's significant differences in this test. First thing from range said, you can't prove we did that. That was the first line out of their mouth. Well, you can't prove we did that. There has to be, there'll be an investigation. And from what I learned here is, once again, I have the burden of proof. I have it. They don't. I have to somehow prove that my water was great for 25 years and yet a year after you completed the first well, the shed.
That doesn't sound like the D E P should take their side on that. Are they giving you a hard time? Are they working with you? I mean-
That this isn't a benign thing that's going on. There's real life repercussions that we're all dealing with. And maybe I'm the only one that, but that's all that's available to me. You take my well water, you take my living. I can't be there without, I can't just tap in. There is nothing in there. You know, that's the idea of where I was living in. And that's, you know, but they're 522 feet away from me and city water is three quarters of a mile out. I got no option. I just want to make it clear. There's real stuff going on behind the scenes here. Whether you're told about it or not, you're not told about 15 well. You're not told about, okay, well.
Do you think we could help the D E P to push that along, the investigation? I mean, how long can you live with it not knowing?
So there's the deal. So I don't know who to trust. Apparently, I, you know by now, I have very little trust in what's going on down there because it does not seem like your tech guys, citizens of City County. Some people are in it for the money, some people are in it for whatever kickbacks, some people just have a preference. I don't know what to believe. But I couldn't leave here today. Like I said, I came up, I'm sorry, I had a little bit of things in mind. But I thought to make sure that you guys knew that this is an ongoing process and something is going on. You know, like I said, it's just, this is my life. This is my family's life. This is where I grew up. This is where I raised my family. I was here 20 years before anybody would, that well was there. So for you to tell me that that's all for naught and throw it out the window because, you know, somebody comes up to my house and I go, what's that? And I'm like, well, that's an active well. My property's worth. It's literally worth. Nobody wants to live there.
All right, all right. We got, we got the point. And I think I'm going to make sure Don follows up with range to get a response on those 14, 15 well discrepancies. And to see if he can help the D E P to help that investigation and not let it be a typical drag that investigation on your water. And that's important right off the bat.
I can tell you, it's all the same question. Because they try to sample in two different areas. Okay, so the first three, they sampled my well. And then the D E P comes out and they say, well, we're not allowed to bail your well. We got to do it inside. Take your little filter off and then we'll test inside. That's good.
No, I'm like, well, how could it be good? It's a tube of water. So now it's up to a geologist to decide. We tested here three times in a row. It was great. Now it's terrible. It'll kill you.
This is reminiscent of, okay, here's a can of rock. The first two inches, it'll kill you. Pour that out. Drink the last two inches. It's great. So here's where I'm at. I'm going to be very clear with you. I don't know where to go. I don't know what to do. I'm filtering the crap out of my water. I'm worried about what's still happening with it. I'm in limbo. But what I wanted to make sure that you guys know, there's a real repercussion of this going on. It's just not the noise and the vibration, the dust and the track. There's other shit going on.
All right, all right. Don, I said, check with range and give us some discrepancies. They're showing 15 wells, 14 wells. And also see if you can do something to help the D E P to push that investigation. Well, I mean, you got to try, try.
If you need anything that I'm talking about, I'm right here with me, both about the 15 A 12, the investigation. And like I said, he's telling me that while they're only drilling five on that sign.
Well, can you make sure Don has that, references that whenever he's talking to him that there'll be your particular case, there'll be a case number on it. Make sure you get it. General comments, questions? Any board members? All right, is there a motion for adjournment? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, yes, I didn't want to forget that.
You also can adjourn the meeting because we have an executive session, right?
Teddy, you had some information about the tax relief? You sent some information?
Yeah, that was information that was put around on Facebook. I just wanted the board to be aware of it. I can look into it further if we want to actually put a program together for the volunteers if that's something the board wants to look into.
What about it? What do you think of that? Considering that it's real estate tax relief?
I'm good.
Okay, we can look into that and I can get some things together for you and we'll present it at another meeting in the future.
Well, then you talked about that computer program.
Yes, so currently the three separate fire companies and the township all have a reporting management system. So that's a total of four. Looking to move that to one singular system for all three fire companies and the township. The township houses all the fire inspection reports and building information for where those fire inspections are being completed. This would, the singular reporting system would assist the volunteer fire departments and their companies with all the data for their members. So I'm going to be working with them to make sure that they're getting all the correct data that they need for the programs that they run within their organizations. This is also takes care of all the incident reporting for- This is also takes care of all the incident reporting for the township when it relates to fires. So, and that meets the national fire incident reporting, uh, qualifications plus the state. Um, this is the system the state is gonna be moving towards. Uh, the current system there, um, that they honor is emergency reporting. The new one is gonna be first due is the company that it's called. Um, other things that this does is it gives our firefighters, uh, view of a building they're responding to with all the details about the building. We call those pre-plans. It'll be on a tablet right in front of their faces. They're responding to the call so they can look at all the different fire protection features that they could have to go check the firearm, uh, panel or gain a key to get into the building. All those things would be outlined on that tablet. This also has records management for certifications. So this is cloud-based system would bring for all the aspects of what the fire department does and all the rest. Do you have any questions?
That's a lot to digest. If you have any individual questions, you should call him and just, you know, phone up on that, uh, program. We'll talk about it, put it on the agenda for next month. Make sure you talk to him this month first. All right. All right, thank you. Now we can go to adjournment.
We can adjourn, we have an executive session and then.
We have another executive session?
Yes, we didn't finish. Right? Yeah.
You wanna, you wanna go to executive session? Frank, Bill? Okay, all right, we have to go to executive session and then. But we won't have any business when we come back. We just closed the meeting, we just can't close before the executive session.
I think what he's saying is you're welcome to hang around, but we're not gonna say anything when we come out, other than we went to executive session, so. And what?
And the purpose.